Good evening.
Face for radio.
Brother, don't get me started.
Okay, all right, settle down here in the council. Welcome to the June 25th Council, City Council Meeting and Public Forum, and we're happy to see all of you here today. So in our first round, we have 19 people to speak in this public forum, so just a little reminder of you can always be in the warm-up seat there if this, I'll call two names, and the first one can speak, and the second one can be in the warm-up seat, and then it goes quickly. So I'll just remind you all of the rules. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And so our first speaker is Dana Ferguson, followed by Patty Heine.
Hi, my name is Dana Ferguson, I'm in Ward Two. I'm here on representing the Wildlife Feeding Rodent Control Committee, a subcommittee of the Sustainability Commission. First, before I get started, I wanted to thank the city for the excellent information you've put on the city website about rodent and rat control. It's really great. Okay, the Wildlife Feeding Rodent Control Committee made a recommendation to the full Sustainability Commission on June 20th. It was approved by a vote of 11 with one person abstaining. The committee recommends that the Eugene City Council draft table ordinance 6.005 concerning wildlife feeding and draft ordinance 6.015 concerning rodent policy. Until itemized issues and code inconsistencies are resolved, a triple bottom line analysis can be done and a broader public vetting process, including wildlife ecology expertise, can be undertaken. In consideration of City Council draft ordinance 6.005 and 6.015, the committee researched the following specific facts and areas and issues relevant to these ordinances. Number one, ordinance is vague as to what conditions and what specific species or families of species would trigger enforcement action. Two, legal issues and policy issues of state implied preemption and city home rule needs clarification. And three, many cities nationwide, including those with state preemption of private usage, have prohibited municipal departments from purchasing or using rodenticide anticoagulant poisons. Cities, excuse me, four, cities are evaluating contra-pest trademark rodent contraceptive bait, and there is one provider in Oregon, in Portland. The triple bottom line, the committee believes that a triple bottom line analysis should be implied to potential ordinance amendments, as in other city policies and regulatory matters, and that these ordinances should be tabled until this and other considerations can be rectified. Our recommendation that this analysis be provided by the city in putting forward draft ordinance 6.005 and 6.015 is consistent with Sustainability Commission goals of environmental health, economic prosperity, and social equity. The proposal is, of course, deemed a strong plus for environmental health and a potential plus for economic impact and social equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty Heine, followed by Lori Powell, oh, nope, sorry, sorry Lori, followed by Debra McGee.
Good evening, Mayor Venice, city councilors and staff. My name is Patty Heine, and I live in the county and volunteer with 350 Eugene. We're really grateful and proud of the work the city of Eugene does for our social and climate justice initiatives like the Sustainability Commission, who just put forward that very reasonable proposition, and doing, not doing businesses with banks anymore who are investing in dirty energy companies that violate human rights. But big change is going to have to come if we're going to keep our promise to reduce the city and the community's greenhouse gas emissions, and this is a complicated thing, and we know it takes a lot of time and a lot of money, and we know we're not in adequate supply of either. It's frustrating, and I'm afraid that our response is not going to be adequate. I'm a retired military officer, I understand threat assessments, and what happens if you get things wrong? If you fail to intervene before it's too late? If you err on the side of caution, or worse, hope that the problem will go away or someone else will fix it? Unthinkable. We have an emergency, and if we do, we need bold action. So we're here again, standing before you, really with people everywhere standing up to push for real progress. We want a ban on new fossil fuel infrastructure projects. We want 100% renewable energy, clean and good for the planet, and cities and counties are stepping up, and I want to tell you a little bit about how we can do this. It's called zoning changes. Portland passed zoning codes to prohibit the bulk fossil fuel infrastructure storage there. Seattle passed a resolution to amend their zoning code, and Tacoma defeated the proposed refinery for methanol in a port planning process. Watcomb County near Bellingham defeated the proposed coal export terminal bypassing an emergency moratorium on new fossil fuel infrastructure. And Vancouver, Washington amended its zoning code to prohibit new crude oil storage, so we can do these things with local actions. And we don't have to wait from guidance from above. In fact, we can't. Martin Luther King famously said, "We're now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now." In this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency, this is a time for vigorous and positive action. We continue to keep this issue before you, so you understand the seriousness of the problem and our willingness to work with you. At the same time, on behalf of our children, we have a right to a livable planet, sustainable of keeping life. There is such a thing as being too late. These are demands, and if we have to lay our bodies down, we will.
Thank you. Debra McGee, followed by Lori Powell.
Good evening, my name is Debra McGee, I've lived in the county for 40 years, and I have prepared a raprimony. I only have three minutes, so I'll hurry up and say, "I stand here before you disappointed today. City has a cap, a climate action plan, but when I look real close, I can't see where you stand. We need 7.6% reductions day by day of greenhouse gas emissions, and oh, by the way, we're not going to get there, so I just have to say, are we just spinning our wheels? It's not a game we play. Come to the meetings, appoint another commission. Who are we fooling? We all know our mission. Climate Recovery Ordinance passed through you, promised the children that that's what we're going to do. Going so slow. We got to be true. Don't give the gas a pass, we got a fuel switch. Renewable electric energy, that's our pitch. How can it be climate recovery when you're laying more pipe? Don't repeat the natural part, that's their hype. It's methane leaking from that pipe. Amazon Park, where our children play, laying a methane pipe that will leak one day? They say we need to expand the pipeline, but I'll tell you what's true, burning up fossils? We got to be through. It's not just the customers burning gas in Eugene. Follow the pipeline, follow it upstream. Fracking's a human rights violation, its destruction is extreme. They're fracking in neighborhoods and even near schools, and from the hydraulic cycle, fracking water is permanently removed. And that's not all. Research proves it's true. Babies born to a mother half a mile from a well, affected by pollution in utero, the defects, we can tell. We're poisoning the future, and that's not right, and we can do much better, and for that, we will fight. Fracking gas contract, will the city sign? Another 20 years of methane in the line? Build community solar gardens, eWeb, yo! Dirty fossil fuels, they all got to go. If we don't do the right things, then when? Then who? If we don't do the right things, what are children going to do? Our habitat is changing, it's the species death knell. The red light is flashing, can't you hear the bell? The answers are here, and the time is near. Climate emergency, going to be a tragedy. Climate emergency, global tragedy is here. So here's my one liner, I'm sorry, here's my no-brainer, one liner, can't say it, no-finer. Doing the same things, expecting things to change, that's the absolute definition of insane. So come on, mayor and councilors, we're on your side, we got your back, you don't have to hide. Step up to bold action. Implement the climate action plan. Doing what's right, that's a great place to stand. Yeah, doing what's right, that's a great place to stand. So friends, please stand if you support the climate action plan.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Lori Powell, followed by Linda Heil.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and city manager and staff. My name is Lori Powell, I live in Ward One, and I'm here with 350 Eugene. I have three points to make, or comments. First of all, we look forward to the July 25th work session on the Transportation System Plan, and we're particularly interested in hearing how it's going with the TSP amendment that Councilor Zelenka introduced last year at this time. This plan should include a rigorous method for assessing the greenhouse gas impacts of proposed projects, so we'll be looking for that information here in the weeks to come. The second comment has to do with the theme you just heard about, the proposed 2.5-mile natural gas pipeline that's proposed to go under Amazon Creek, up 30th Avenue to LCC. This is indeed inconsistent with the climate recovery goals that we have for our city. And my husband and I just yesterday were driving out toward LCC, and it was amazing to see how many dying trees are out there. If you haven't gone for a trip up 30th Avenue, please do so, and just look at the, I think they're Doug Firs, just withering in themselves. It's a tinderbox, so we're proposing to put a pipeline up there with methane leaks and the potential for, you know, whatever, and a tinderbox of a forest there that's very close to residential areas, so some to think about. And then finally, I think we all, most of us know, maybe if you don't, it's okay, but on October 29th, what's being called the Trial of the Century will be here, starting here in Eugene, the federal case of Juliana Etol versus the United States. And it's a case that's brought forth by our Children's Trust that's based here in Eugene, and just thinking about the juxtaposition of a proposed pipeline going up to LCC with the Trial of the Century here in our community, and those two don't jive in my mind, and I don't think they probably do in yours either, so please think about that. The media will be watching. Okay? Thanks. And we will too.
Thank you. Linda Heil, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Hi, everybody, my name is Linda Heil, I live in Eugene Ward Two. Mayor Venice, city councilors, and Mr. Reyes. A highlight in Eugene this month was Paul Hawkins' keynote at the Oregon Association of Recyclers Conference. Mr. Hawkins is one of the founders of the Drawdown Project, which has compiled, quote, "the most comprehensive plan ever proposed to reverse global warming." Thank you, Mayor Venice, for your excellent opening remarks at this event and for your leadership in goal-setting to decrease Eugene's carbon emissions. The Climate Recovery Ordinance sets drawdown-style goals to bring Eugene's greenhouse gas emissions in line for a livable planet. Effective action strategies are needed to reach those goals. Hawkins emphasized the need to map, measure, and monitor for strategies to be effective. The Climate Action Plan is Eugene's CRO-related strategy, so it must include measurements. The baseline for measurement, according to city staff, is the 2015 consumption-based greenhouse gas emissions figure, about 3.5 million metric tons of CO2. The CRO mandates planning for an average of 7.6% annual decrease from that baseline. Perhaps this will be updated so that 2017 emissions data can be used. Greater annual decreases are almost surely needed to reach that goal now, since emissions are unlikely to have changed since 2015. The large lever stakeholders are organizations in Eugene who have significant impact on community-wide fossil fuel use, et cetera. I'm going to skip ahead a little bit here. Eugene has decided, wisely or otherwise, to depend on these large lever stakeholders to formulate the greenhouse gas reduction that will be the Climate Action Plan. So each of these organizations must know its baseline carbon footprint, and the city team must fit together a package that will decrease CO2 output to something, by something close to 300,000 metric tons annually. We ask the city manager and the cap team to assure that a clear and adequate explanation of the measurements is integrated into the large lever shareholder processes, beginning with the meetings in July. General knowledge of the goals is not enough. The group must have specific metrics to work with. The LLS group should begin their work with a clear understanding of two crucial measures. One, the magnitude of the greenhouse gas emissions reduction that is required, about 300,000 metric tons of CO2 annually, and secondly, their individual annual carbon emissions. Without this foundation, admirable green actions that contribute only minor actual reductions are likely to be mistaken for effective actions, and Eugene will fail to meet its CRO obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill O'Brien, followed by Roy Ward.
I just want to comment just a little bit, just a little bit, on the Register Guard editorial on the sports page by Austin Meek. Basically, well, I read the obituary as well of a Mr. Powell, an eminent developer in the state of Oregon, and that, jumping all over the place, but his obituary, in a way, means nothing to me because I don't know the gentleman. I wish him well, and I'm just kind of concerned in a way of someone that I know indirectly, a Bill McChesney, a Tom McChesney, citizens of Eugene once. There's a plaque at Powell Plaza, which is, which I've never even seen, but I vaguely know where it's at, there's a tree there. Now, my understanding is the tree is the property of the University of Oregon, it's either a laurel, or whatever it is, no. But this plaque has been taken, and I have no idea who owns the plaque, whether the plaque was part of Mr. Powell's wonderful donation to the university or to the city, because the university and the city are two different entities. So I hope the plaque is safeguarded. Hope whoever, I'm actually, I'm actually kind of being superfluous or talking on a moot issue, because this was in the paper, it's probably read by about 30,000 people, and then people will talk among themselves, so that's all I'm doing, is just repeating what was done in the newspaper. So I hope the plaque is safeguarded. That's all I can say, except I think the city council did punt by not making historical Hayward Field a historical landmark, given landmark status. So you just gave it away, basically. There was no, no fight, no, nothing, you know, on most of your part, so I'm extremely disappointed. And as I turned on the TV yesterday, I watched United States Track and Field Championships in Des Moines, Iowa, and I think that was wonderful. And I looked in the bleachers, and saw these great athletes running, wow, so fast. Those bleachers are half-full, even maybe a third full. So all it does is gets to TV coverage all around the world, someone will be making money on it, but those people are having a good time, and that's it.
Thank you. Roy Ward, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
Hello, I'm Roy Ward, I'm from Betty Taylor's Ward, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you again. I had the pleasure of going to the June 13th Working Group on Demographic Data Collection Practices Update, and it was a pleasure because it was a good presentation and followed by intelligent questions, and I have some interest in this area as a data professional that deals with processing large amounts of data and having some idea of how easy it is to abuse it. I came away from this feeling somewhat reassured that what the focus seems to be on not collecting data that doesn't need to be collected. So, no, I've got, I'm pretty happy with what I heard there, and things can always be improved. What I would like, and what I think would be important, is to codify that. We have, currently, we have a part of the city code, the protection of individuals and groups, and there's some important groups that are left out of that, important categories like immigration status, gender, gender identity. And I think it's really important to extend this to be as broad and as powerful as possible because this is, the stronger we make the protections against protecting data, sorry, the stronger we make protections against collecting data we don't need, it's kind of the safer we all are. One thing I did get out of the working group was how complex this is, because there are, you know, there are lots of exceptions from law, there's exceptions for public, for service, there's exceptions for equity considerations. So what I'm going to, what I'd ask the council to do, and I know this, this, this working group was informational, to get on their agenda as soon as possible, preferably before the break for the summer, working this into an ordinance, or starting to work this into an ordinance, so that then the city staff can do the really good job they've been doing of working out how to codify all the exceptions that are required. And, oh, the other thing I actually didn't include with this is, one of the reasons this is important is some of the state protections that were mentioned in that presentation may well go away in November, so again, reason for having strong local protections. So, yeah, so I would urge the city council to take that, it's a great start, the collecting information is a good exercise in itself because it exposes where things can be improved, but going through, and I know it's a complex process, turning that into an ordinance that has the strongest protection possible with regards to data collection. And I would also propose that, given this is going to be such a long process, that I direct John Rees to have an administrative order to not collect information about immigration status, because that is particularly fundamental thing at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Robin Bloomgarden, followed by Dante Douglas.
Hi, I'm back, it's Robin Bloomgarden, and I'm in Chris Pryor's Ward. It's been almost four years since community members, 350 Eugene specifically, respectfully began pushing you all to pass the Climate Recovery Ordinance. It's been amended several times since then with encouragement, again, from community members supplying lots of good current data as often as possible. You're just beginning to undertake a more serious planning process over the next two years. If the city completes an aggressive plan within two years, we have just lost six years when the city could actually have been making some changes around here to slow down greenhouse gas emissions. I'm still seeing city employees using gas lawn mowers all over town, I saw two this week. After all the work done by community members, keeping you up to date on the latest climate data, et cetera, why are you cutting those same community members out of the two-year Climate Action Plan process? They are the real energy behind getting a carbon cap at the state level, as well as the CRO here in Eugene. They are the ones who have been learning all they can from other states, countries, and experts who already are moving ahead to curtail greenhouse gas emissions. They have been going through the latest data and staying current all along. Again, I ask, why are community members being cut out of the planning process? And one last thing, please don't spend all your time with the cap on making fancy, colorful, and shiny presentations that take up valuable staff time and money. Just let the cap participants, participants do the work, and when they're done, maybe a simple, plain paper brochure that explains what the plan is, okay? We'll save some money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dante Douglas, followed by- Dante Douglas, followed by Todd Boyle.
Hi, my name is Dante Douglas. I'm a resident of Eugene in Ward Eight. I'm also an activist with the local chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. The DSA is a national organization of about 40,000 individuals interested in furthering socialism, both in local community spheres and on the national stage. The following is a statement prepared by the Eugene chapter to be delivered to the attendees of the Eugene City Council meeting regarding the increased scope and brutality of the work being done by the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE. We, the members of the Eugene DSA, proclaim our support for the goals and actions of Occupy ICE PDX. This direct action to blockade ICE's prison in Portland highlights the contradiction that the city of Portland and the state of Oregon claim to support undocumented immigrants while they allow ICE to conduct human rights abuses within their jurisdictions. The inhumane policies that led to criminalization and dehumanization of people that come to this country seeking respite from the events, from the effects of U.S. foreign policy abroad must end immediately. ICE must be completely abolished, along with CBP, especially as climate change threatens to displace millions, even billions of people. All countries of the global north must radically rethink our approach to human migration, or we will be complicit in genocide. We call on Mayor Lucy Viness and the Eugene City Council to go beyond non-cooperation with ICE and to offer real protections against, for immigrants, against deportation and labor abuses. Eugene DSA stands in solidarity with all people who ICE has thrown into cages or deported, with the families they have ripped apart, and with the children they have tortured by kidnapping them and withholding comfort from them. We will continue to bring supplies and comrades to the camp outside the Portland ICE facility to support the brave people standing up to ICE. The following is a quote from Mario Savio, a lifelong civil rights activist who died in 1996. "There is a time when the operation of the machine becomes so odious, makes you so sick at heart that you cannot take part. You can't even passively take part. And you've got to put your bodies on the gears and upon the wheels, upon the levers, upon the apparatus, and you've got to make it stop. Solidarity and liberation to all, Eugene DSA." Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Boyle, followed by Michelle Emmons.
Pretty tough act to follow. Thank you, Dante. I came to express my, first of all, thanks to Eugene, people of Eugene for this open mic. But I expressed my solidarity with the protest by Occupy Portland ICE up there, hundreds of people who are blocking the action of Immigration and Customs Enforcement. And I'm also grateful to the, really grateful to the people of the DSA chapter, Democratic Socialist, for two things, for their quality of their thinking that they, and focus that they put into this issue and its implications of global climate change and migrations and our responsibility. And also for their willingness to take action, you know, which I haven't, I've been negligent in. It also reminds me of the 350 chapter here, which I think is outstanding for their insight into, and their leadership. And it's quite healing for me to hear my fellow citizens talk. Because I too went through a change in 2003 after a life as a CPA for 20 years. I went to, graduated 40 years ago this month from the University of Oregon in accounting and got my CPA license and practiced up until that time. The Iraq War was so horrific for me that I burned my CPA license that was given to me by people of Oregon at great expense and quit practicing. And I'm no longer on board the American project because of its wars. You just can't go around the world killing millions of people without people noticing. And so I, basically, I haven't been able to participate in our economy or our society since that time. So basically, what I'm asking for the city council to reiterate your non-compliant, or non-cooperation with ICE and the Customs and Immigration, and also to be aware that cities and states around the country are breaking with federal government over issues like cannabis and ICE and over larger issues on the horizon like war, which is completely illegal and immoral. None of the wars since World War II have been self-defense. And climate change, the federal government is doing nothing about climate change. They're just going to march us right. In fact, they're enforcing laws that force the destruction of climate and the burning of carbon. And so for these two reasons, we're going to have to break with the federal government. And so I'd like the city also, I'm going to ask that you inform the officers of your police agencies that their primary loyalty is to the people of Eugene who hired them and in case of any divergence of doctrines from Washington, D.C., 2,500 miles away, or the interests of the people of Eugene who hired them. We didn't hire them to enforce any programs or laws from 2,500 miles away, which, by the way, that's farther than the distance from Paris to Uzbekistan. It's completely ridiculous for us to be following these so-called leaders in Washington, D.C. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Emmons, followed by Joshua Caraco.
Hi, I'm Michelle Emmons. I live in Ward Seven. Tonight, I'm representing Willamette Riverkeeper, and our office is located at 454 Willamette Street, number 218, 97402. Since 2015, the Willamette Riverkeepers River Guardians Program has brought together volunteer leaders from all backgrounds from around the city. We clean up and monitor the environment along the riverfront. We've helped to coordinate stakeholder meetings. We've organized Trashy Tuesday cleanups, community-wide cleanup special events. We've worked with neighborhood organizations, Eugene Mission's Life Change Program, and brought together folks from different homeless groups to come out and help us clean up the river. We've even had stipend programs for those folks who are participating with us. The numbers of the amount of garbage and needles that we've cleaned up helped to demonstrate some of the work that we've done over the last three years. But more important, what we've cleaned up this year demonstrates the willingness of our community to be part of the solution. This year in 2018, we've already engaged 178 volunteers. We've generated 814 service hours, removed 41 total yards of trash off the river, along with 392 total needles collected. As you can see, that's quite a bit of stuff that we've done off the river this year. About three weeks ago, we had a meeting with our Willamette River Guardians Group, and we came up with a whole list of ideas and suggestions, which I emailed to you all earlier today. Tonight, I'd just like to summarize those in a four-part strategy, recognizing that utilizing one of these strategies alone won't work. We're going to have to think of a way to take pieces of each of these strategies and work them together. The four tactics that we're looking at are enforcement, social services, sanctioned camping areas, and sanitation. With enforcement, we'd like to ask you to recognize that it is time to enforce the law and ensure that illegal trespassers are removed off stakeholders' affected properties. We're asking that you enforce the trespass law fairly for the health and welfare of all citizens, including private property owners, legitimate parks users, and the illegal campers themselves who are not living in safe or sanitary conditions. In social services, we understand that EPT and cahoots are operating at capacity, and they may not have the time to reach out or deliver services to those who need them most. Well, what would happen if the city sponsored a volunteer team of crisis-trained volunteers to work alongside the parks ambassadors? These folks could help connect services to some of the most vulnerable members of the community, and these volunteers could also potentially supplement the work of parks ambassadors, allowing expanded monitoring on the riverfront, including those properties owned by Union Pacific, UO, and ODOT that remain within the city's boundaries. The management for this team of volunteers could be funded in partnership with a number of nonprofit agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Caraco, followed by Eric Jackson.
Hi, Joshua Caraco, Ward Three, soon to be Ward One because I was given 60 days to move out of my house, which is why I'm here, is to talk about housing, because I'm kind of, it's been, and I might break the rules a little and talk about the riverfront briefly because it was suggested that housing generally, even though it related heavily, anyway, I don't want to waste too much time. I'm kind of just really disappointed, while I'm like really excited to see a lot of talk about housing and a lot of really like cool progressive things happen, and including potential development on the riverfront, I'm also really disappointed by lack of discussion of renters' rights, which has been like really ignored by this city. And I want to suggest, maybe not entirely, but that while these larger issues are incredibly complicated, and I'm sure there's going to be a huge amount of discussion about the riverfront property, there are simple things that we could do right now that have virtually no negative effects that help people now, that are the law of the land in other sister, progressive sister cities across the nation already, and Eugene has a chance to catch up and hopefully be better than on. One of which is banning no cause evictions. I know that many, much of the council and the mayor are in favor of doing at least 90 days. I think banning it would be better. That's literally the law where I grew up in Berkeley, California. Another suggestion would be requiring property owners or landlords to be responsible for yard care, which makes perfect sense because yards are there longer than tenants. And they seem like a small issue. It actually falls into all kinds of other sustainability issues. Another is like banning application fees, which are kind of scams and a lot of like lower-income people can't afford to keep paying to apply to apartments. And these are, these are simple laws that you could pass now that help people now that aren't complicated. I know that there are other issues, but I'm kind of disappointed that we're touching the ADUs and going into all the miniscule details of things when we could pass things now about the riverfront property. I know, so here's where I'm getting, because it's related. There's a small parcel that's labeled for affordable housing, and I think this is great. I think it's labeled wrong. This is low-income subsidized housing. This doesn't affect how we make housing affordable for the entire city, and that's a difference, it's just a terrible name. And I think it would also be great, and that implies that there is one little parcel of affordable, and that's low income, and that the rest of it isn't, couldn't possibly be affordable for working populations. And that's confusing, right? Anyway, another thing, I think anytime we have large housing development projects, we should have some kind of assessment team for how that affects greater housing in the community. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Eric Jackson, followed by Lilith Snow.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. Eric Jackson, now, I guess, 114-ish days in Eugene. Day after I spoke to you guys last, my 100th day, I got on the 12th, I took it for trespass. So it's been an interesting one. I believe I added it to the email for the council or the messages for the council on your Facebook page, so you can check out the video of that. Again, speaking about the unhoused, some of the behaviors of the law enforcement has been coming up into question. I don't know if you're aware of Ward Nine. I'm one of the people that just gets involved with any of the community organizations. Ward Nine is now organizing to film, and the reason that they feel that they need to film is because of some of the behaviors that are a little out of whack in their mind. So that's something that they're working on separate from me. I've been filming police action or any kind of action to protect all involved from the beginning. The officers, when they were unvested and not wearing cameras, and I had a camera. I believe that it protects everybody. Off the homeless subject for one second, being that I'm talking about cameras, the mobile deployment stations that the chief is talking about for surveillance is fantastic. I'm from New Jersey, just so I don't talk about negative things all the time. I'm from New Jersey, Camden, New Jersey, back in the 80s, murder capital of the world. Denver, Detroit, and Camden thought about this. The downtown bus terminal was absolutely horrible drug set for dealing drugs and everything else going on in town. They put up one of those camera deployment systems. Within six months, it stopped. So keep that in mind, and I haven't been able to address that because of my order in comparison to the chief and any of the other meetings that we've been at. But the treatment of the unhoused in the community, it's got to be worked on much more aggressively. Human Resources Committee, Human Rights Commission is working on it as much as they can. The homeless and poverty group is making suggestions as much as they can. But action, just like the climate people have said, everything in, everything that came out of their mouths, you can relate back to the same, not speaking of energy and climate, and speaking of the unhoused. It's a problem that faces us. It's a problem that's here, and it's a problem that a lot of it can be addressed. I've told you guys before, I'm staying here because I think Eugene actually can get a handle on this. Figure out how to house the 65% that want to be housed, and figure out how to better deal with the other 35% that don't, because a lot of people just don't have that ability. I ask you guys to just consider it all the time in your brains because it's a serious, serious problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Lilith Snow, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Hello, I am Lilith Snow, and this is my first time to one of these. So I appreciate the fact that you guys are listening. I also want to talk about the unhoused and the fact that sleeping is a crime, is a crime. Like, the reason drug use is so high is because it's illegal to sleep. Like, how does that make sense at all? If you don't want us to do illegal drugs, you should let us do legal sleeping instead. An idea for this, maybe have all of the nonprofits or not-for-profits in town donate a certain percent of their parking spots at night, dawn to dusk kind of thing. No waiting lists, first come, first served, no need for porta-pots, just like tent space in a parking spot, and I can sleep there and not have to do drugs. Would be great, because I don't like doing drugs. I like to sleep. But I can't sleep if there's cops kicking me all the time. So like, a spot to sleep would be great.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen, followed by John Borowski.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen. I live downtown. I came tonight because of something I heard last time I was here. I live downtown. A lot of my friends tell me I should, for my own protection, carry pepper spray, mace, or possibly a gun. Well, I can't carry pepper spray or mace. I'm highly allergic, and it would cause me a lot of problems. I don't have a problem with carrying a gun, but, you know, it's hard for me to convince people it's safe to come downtown if I have to carry a gun. I can't say, come down, bring your family, make sure they're armed. And I'd rather not have to do that. I mean, you know, my stepfather took me out when I was 14 to shoot a .357 Magnum. I lived 16 years in cowboy country and shot about every kind of gun that there is. So I'm familiar with them, but I prefer not to have to carry one. I would prefer that we adopted the police chief's suggestion of having the mobile camera unit. It's something I could point to and say, hey, there's cameras down here, it's safe. I'm, and don't buy into Big Brother watching you, because to me, that's not a problem. If you've got a smartphone, you're carrying Big Brother in your pocket every single day, and they're tracking every move you make. So if you really were worried about that, you wouldn't carry a smartphone. The other thing, so I'm urging you to please get the cameras down here. It'll be much safer for everybody. The other thing I want to speak about is I noticed your rat education program. Very good. Not going to help the downtown. Downtown rats aren't caused by chicken feed being left out or uncapped compost or, you know, feeding the wild animals. Part of the problem downtown is there's a lot of food left on the sidewalk. There's, travelers leave dog food, piles of dog food on the sidewalk. People leave a lot of food residue on the sidewalk. You know, when someone comes out of a restaurant, hands traveler their leftover food, most of the time, half of it's laying on the sidewalk the next day. Right now, in the neighborhood I lived in on my way down here, I noticed pizza, cereal, other food debris all over the sidewalks down here. Gets worse on the weekends when the burrito brigade hands out burritos, and bless their hearts for doing that, but there's a lot of half-eaten burritos downtown. And that doesn't get picked up till Monday, Tuesday, when the city clean up. So I really think the city needs to have cleanups on the weekend, especially on Sunday when that food goes out. You need to come by and pick up the residue that's not eaten, because that's just feeding the rat problem down here. And, and maybe some education on cleanup after yourself, or maybe get on some of the empty storefronts, the owner, building owners, or the real estate people and say, clean it up.
Thank you. John Borowski, followed by Cassia.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Borowski, Ward Three. I'm speaking to you tonight on something on your consent calendar. I'd like to thank staff for making a clerical error and not getting the supplemental budget three passed last weekend, or last week. I didn't have a chance to speak to it then, so I'm going to speak to it now with my three minutes. There's some good things in there. We've got some grants that are going to help save routes to schools and after-school programming. There's also a million dollars coming from the road fund to help do the railroad quiet zones. So supplemental three has a lot of good things in it, and I just wanted to bring them to your attention since I wasn't able to make it for the public hearing last week. I think that one of the other things that I would have spoke about at those public hearings would have been some things that are becoming available to the city and to the budget process. the budget process. I'm talking about the employment incentive fund that the governor has proposed. It's basically a match that helps offset PERS costs. Recently, the governor's chief of staff has sent out a communication regarding the Comcast settlement that has gone statewide and encouraging jurisdictions to use that settlement for the employment incentive funds. Lane County, in their last budget, put aside some of their reserves, about $8 million, that if the fund is funded the way that has been promised by the legislature, would save them over $20 million over the next year in their PERS costs. So, I would really hope that in the upcoming year, you guys look into that. The other thing is that the EIAF was proposed at a 25% match from the state, and that hasn't been funded as of yet, and they're talking about reducing it to maybe 15 or 10%. I would hope that the city manager would get our elected, or whatever, the people that talk to the people at the state to keep that at 25%. I mean, that was the promise that the legislature put through. There's very few things that we can do to help offset our PERS costs. This is one of them. I think using one-time monies to offset future PERS responsibility is a very responsible thing to do, and I would encourage the council to have a meaningful talk with staff, because the next year, or, you know, when the legislature goes in, is the time that we need to be engaging in this. So, with that, that would have been my speak last week, and I appreciate the ability to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cassia, followed by Louis English.
Good evening. I'm Cassia. I'm a resident of Springfield. And tonight, I thank you for your attention. I wanted to just share my support for Rideshare. I work for an institution of higher education here in Eugene, and this was something I was very excited to see brought to attention. Working with many students and families who come to visit the area, this is going to be an important component to their time here in Eugene. And I have spoken to numerous students and families who have waited at the Eugene Airport for taxis or arrived, and unbeknownst to them, they didn't realize that we didn't have a Rideshare program here. So, I personally am very excited to see that this is at the forefront of an initiative. And I know that it is something that will continue to help build some economic development here through our institutions of higher education as we continue to see Lane County as a destination for more than just our own students to continue to dive into their education. We're seeing more and more students coming to see this as their home out of state for their couple of years of education as they're launching into their careers, and we really provide an incredible opportunity for them here to learn. Rideshare honestly is a small component, but it's going to make a big difference in helping students realize that this is an incredible place for them to come. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis English, followed by Al Grapel.
My name's Lou English. I'm part of Councilman Pryor's Ward, and I'm a longtime resident of Eugene. 1971, I came here working on the railroad. I'm a member of the Willamette Kayak and Canoe Club, the American Canoe Association. I'm a River Guardian, part of the Willamette River Keepers that Michelle talked about. And my main focus will be on the river, the Willamette River in Eugene. Wonderful, wonderful things that we have here in Eugene that the city shouldn't be promoting a lot more than it is now. Some of the areas of concern is, that I have personally, is the canoe canal, the access, the parking. So often, when I go to use the canoe canal, which I don't use that much anymore, is because there's a baseball game. And I think that the people have to pay to watch the baseball, to park at the baseball games, so they use the canoe canal and the dog park, parking for that. Likewise, with the football games. I think the city should encourage people to use other venues for parking and really focus on use of the river and the canals. As to some of the issues with the river, it's degraded since I've been here. The water quality's gone up, but the areas along the river, because of, well, homelessness and other illegal, well, I don't want to use the word illegal, but usage, because there's no place else to go, has made it unsafe, not only for people, but for the animals and for the fish. It's a very hazardous area at times with the needles and the human waste on top of the ground. So, in that vein, sanitation. Right now, law enforcement is not really active along the river. Alternative camping spots have not been provided. I think they should be. They should be out in the open for everyone to see, the people that need the housing. And I agree with one of the earlier speakers that there should be spaces left open, like the nonprofits, the churches, and so forth in the area, to allow people to park overnight with porta-potties. I believe in porta-potties. So, I would like to suggest that the city help initiate the installation, monitoring, maintenance of strategically-placed porta-potties, dumpsters, and needle collection containers in the areas most affected by illegal camping. There are many community organizations that could be of assistance in making this happen. Many are already partners in clean water efforts. At the very least, if we are asking people to be accountable for their living situations, we should also be accountable to them as part of our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Al Grapel is our final speaker.
I'm Al Grapel, and thank you for providing this forum. I don't do this very often, so I hope I remain at least understandable. I live in a small, isolated piece of county land at the south end of River Road. This is my third time in, living in Oregon. I've been in Corvallis for quite a while, and I moved to Eugene from Whidby Island because of the Willamette Valley and because of the Willamette River. That was one of my major reasons, and so I'm going to talk a bit about the river. You can see, I've been a member of the cleanups for quite a few years, and I do other volunteer things for Willamette Riverkeeper. I lead tours and teach classes that use the Willamette River. I've watched the illegal, I assume, camps that have grown up along the river and helped clean those up. And for, the only reason I can guess is that the sound of the moving water makes people think that's a flush, and so they're depositing their waste right on the edge of the river or in the river. And I think that's unacceptable. And I hope you guys will be sensitive to the need to keep that from happening, because we don't want that to happen to our rivers. So, what do we do about the people that camp there? They need to go someplace else, I think, and that's one of the things, Michelle didn't get to make all four of her points, but one of them was that we need other clean and safe camping areas within the city that are not going to create that kind of water pollution that the people camp right on the river, too. And this is, one of the reasons I'm here is I have a question. I probably could have gotten an answer if I had made a phone call. Do you folks have some sort of a committee or something that deals with homelessness, houselessness, that sort of thing? I assume you do. Is that, are you allowed to answer questions? Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
No, this is your time. We'll respond when you're done.
Okay. I assume you do, and if you don't, you should. I guess what I'd like to do, if you do, is to find out if they hold public meetings, if they're advertised, and if not, how I can get on a list to at least come, listen to them from time to time. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final speaker. I can answer that question. Are there other comments that councillors want to be in the queue? Councillor Syret? Anybody else? Okay, just a quick response. There are a number of groups that are addressing homelessness. The Poverty and Homelessness Board is a kind of multi-stakeholder group that works on poverty and homelessness, so specifically on housing. There's our public meetings. There are also, there's a Shelter and Support of Housing Subcommittee, which is also a public meeting, so you can find that on the county's website, Poverty and Homelessness Board. Look for that. There are also, we have a Human Rights Commission that also addresses issues of homelessness. Those are also public meetings that you can find on the city's website. We have a Housing Policy Board that talks about housing issues. There are quite a few public meetings that are available for you to learn more about who's doing what. So, thank you for asking. And Councillor Syret?
Thank you. Well, thanks, everyone, who came to speak on what a variety of topics. Ideas about protecting our river while trying to humanely address the negative impacts of illegal uses there, dealing with rats downtown, how we might allow more car camping sites, addressing our future PERS obligation, climate recovery. That is quite a list. So, I just wanted to say a few words. The gentleman who talked about looking at the E-Web plan and the critique of calling the one-site affordable housing, this council has talked about the fact that that is a term that's very inaccurate, but it is the term that's used by the federal and state agencies that provide the tax credits and other supports to build housing. So, some years passed, they went away from calling it subsidized housing or public housing to affordable housing. So, we're kind of stuck with that inaccurate term. I appreciated your comments about renters' rights and the fact that this council has not actively addressed those recently, and I will take that to heart and put it on my to-do list. I am working right now on a work session poll for data collection, refining the ordinance around what kind of data we collect and why we keep it, and protecting our residents against undue data collection that is not for any reasonable purpose. I appreciate the thoughts around downtown cleaning and cleaning up the food waste on the streets as a way to control the rats downtown. And I also appreciated the input around local law enforcement not cooperating with ICE. Oregon Sanctuary Law predates pretty much all of the laws in this country and was among the first states to adopt a law that specifically prohibited local or state law enforcement from acting in the capacity of a federal agent. And your local law enforcement, your local EPD officers know very well that that is not something they do, and they do not do that. So, as far as other issues, I know there's a conversation going on at the Springfield City Council tonight around their leasing jail space to ICE to hold people there. We don't have a jail. We don't have the capacity to be in that position at this point, but if we did, we'd certainly be having a conversation about that. So, thanks, everyone, who came to speak to us. It's very important to hear from you all.
Okay, any other, we're done? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming. It is always enlightening to hear what you have to say and keeping us on track on so many important things. So, thank you again for coming. And now, we are ready to turn to council business. First up is a consent calendar. Any questions? Need to pull anything? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the items on the consent calendar. Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five? None opposed? And so, that passes. Thank you. Okay. And now, adjourning the city council meeting and opening a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency, and we have a public hearing on the proposed terms for downtown riverfront development. So, Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Michael Kinnison to start off with a brief overview of the project, just to remind everybody what it is, and prior to the public comment.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. My name is Michael Kinnison. I'm the Director of Community Development. Eugene loves its river. The river is a big part of our identity in Eugene. It brings us together to relax and play and has an important place in the economic development of our community. But the industrial uses of the past have also served as a barrier for connecting our urban core to the river. Current conditions at the property significantly constrain how we access the riverfront or experience it. The community's desire to reconnect to the river is strong, and the vision, well documented in various plans and processes, okay, that have taken place over the last few decades. It's important to note that redeveloping the riverfront property is consistent with larger policy objectives we have related to the way we have decided to grow and develop as a community. We have a real opportunity in front of us to bring this vision to reality, to transform a barren former industrial site to a thriving, bustling neighborhood on the river. The Williams and Dame Concept Plan builds on the vision of the 2010 E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. Key elements include connecting Fifth Street to the river, a mix of market-rate apartments and townhomes, affordable housing, a hotel, neighborhood commercial, food and beverage options, and park and open spaces. For clarification, the steam plant circled there is not part of the terms with Williams and Dame. We have recently completed a request for qualifications process, and will be moving forward with a proposals phase for qualified teams in the near future for this iconic We recognize there are differences between the Williams and Dame Concept Plan and the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. This is not surprising when you move from a vision to implementation. We should honor the community input that went into the master plan and ask if the proposed changes are an appropriate evolution. Does the Williams and Dame Concept Plan uphold the master plan principles? Tonight is an opportunity to hear the public's perspective on these questions. We've provided a number of opportunities to engage the public in conversation about the concept and terms, including an open house last Wednesday. Tours of the property were conducted to give a sense of scale of the park and plaza and other proposed elements of the redevelopment. This slide shows you the outline, the boundary of the proposed riverfront park and the plaza. And the circle there in the middle are one of the tour groups to give you a sense of scale in the center of the proposed plaza. Feedback received at the open house and through other outreach activities has been summarized and provided to you this evening in hard copy. The details of how the concept plan will get implemented and the responsibilities for city agency in Williams and Dame are contained in the proposed terms and include selling eight acres to Williams and Dame at $7.95 a square foot, ground lease of two commercial parcels at market rates to Williams and Dame, the agency retaining a parcel to partner with an affordable housing provider on a project, a 50/50 cost-sharing on the project infrastructure, city construction and management of a one-plus-acre public plaza that is part of the larger riverfront park, and Williams and Dame construction and management of a small park under the viaduct open to the public, cost-sharing on construction of sidewalks with other property owners, sale of the property as-is in its current condition, split of system development charge credits based on the property owned, and the city is responsible for a number of conditions of closing that must occur before Williams and Dame is obligated to purchase the property and are listed there at the bottom of the slide. It's critical that we have assurance that what is proposed to be built gets built and uses high-quality design and materials. The community expects this. Incorporating a design approval process will help to ensure that that happens. Williams and Dame will also be expected to build on a set timeline, and the agency retains the right to repurchase the property if they are unable to do so. Successful redevelopment of this site with its complicated environmental conditions and mix of private and community assets requires a strong public-private partnership and the sharing of costs for land and infrastructure. This slide shows the public-private split of the estimated costs for the terms proposed. To help understand the long-term impacts of the terms, we have completed a cost-benefit analysis that is included in your packet. It considers the fiscal impacts in terms of property tax revenues and also includes a triple-bottom-line analysis. Staff will provide an overview of this analysis at the July 9th work session, and it's also available on our website. After tonight's public hearing, the agency has a work session scheduled for July 9th. At that time, you will have an opportunity to take action on the proposed concept and terms. If the terms are approved, processes related to the conditions of closing will include public hearings and... public hearings and decision points that also provide additional opportunities for public input. And with that, I'll close my remarks and open it up to the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, we have 17 people who have asked to speak, and just a little reminder of the rules, those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And so, first up is Zach Mulholland, followed by Tiffany Edwards.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Zach Mulholland, speaking on behalf of the Sustainability Commission. We presented a letter from the commission a few weeks ago, and we wanted to resubmit that letter as an official part of the public record tonight. Wanted to start by saying thank you very much to the council and to city staff on the process, largely in line with what the commission recommended for process, so wanted to thank them for the public education event held last Wednesday and for the council for your upcoming work session, looking deeper into this proposal. In addition to process, the commission had a number of recommendations on the project itself. From our letter to the commission, the city should seek to maintain the quantity and quality of green open space, as was envisioned in the original E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. This should include approximately five and a half acres of green space on the site, and this green space shouldn't be reduced in size or quality as the larger project is divided into smaller projects. One potential option is to hold additional land in city hands for green open space. Include additional provisions to ensure high standards for the facilities being built. These can include, but are not limited to, the following list: green roof or solar roof requirements, energy efficiency requirements, and EV-ready requirements. Lastly, there were a number of public concerns that came to us through our process, and I wanted to make sure that those got into the public record as well. Again, from the letter, we heard from citizens that there was concerns around maximizing the setbacks of buildings from the river, consistency of the project with the 100-year flood plain, opportunities for bike and pedestrian access for people coming from the university, and requiring minimum amounts of mixed-use development and other desired uses within the site. Thanks much for your time tonight, and I'll give this to John to be part of the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tiffany Edwards, followed by Pete Knox.
Mayor and city councilors, good evening. My name's Tiffany Edwards. I currently reside in Ward Seven, and I'm a neighbor of the Santa Clara neighborhood. I am here on behalf of the Eugene Chamber of Commerce in strong support of the E-Web Riverfront redevelopment project as it's currently being proposed. And I want to take just a minute here to ask that the folks here in the audience that are here to, to support the project, please just stand and be recognized. We promise we won't all speak, so I just wanted to make sure to acknowledge that we have a few people in the room. So, where we currently are in this process represents years of planning to execute on a community vision to transform and repurpose a brownfield site on a prime location on the Willamette River, adjacent to downtown and other emerging areas, into a community gem. This public-private partnership opportunity with Williams and Dame is truly one of a kind, and the fact that we have a private in-state developer working so closely with our community to understand who we are and what makes us unique speaks volumes. We are very fortunate to reap the benefits of all the success that Williams and Dame has had right here in our own state, and as they now turn their attention to Eugene. I ask that you think of this project in the sense of big picture and imagine all the possibilities it creates, not just in the immediate area of the E-Web property, but with the opportunities it creates to enhance everything all around, from housing to commerce to experiences for locals and visitors alike. This project is a win. And as someone who represents the business community, it goes without saying that the additional tax revenues that will be generated from this development are significant and will go a long way in addressing so many of our community's needs. You will be asked to make decisions along the way to keep this project moving forward in order for this vision to fully be realized. I ask that you consider the vast and immeasurable impact this project will have on the community and keep us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Knox, followed by Philip Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name's Pete Knox. I'm the, reside in Ward One, Emily Simples Ward. So, those of you who know me, I am co-chair of Neighborhood Leaders Council, as well as Vice Chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Tonight, I come to you with wearing the hat of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, Vice Chair. And last week, we had an opportunity to sit down with Mike Kennison, who we just heard from, detailing, you know, with their partner from Rains and Danes, the, how this plan looks, how, how it goes together, what, and where we're going next with it. We've spent, I think I've heard, 30 years is the, and I don't know how many dollars we have, and now we're at a point where we can, we can absolutely take this and have a wonderful opportunity to create a new space that has been kind of, kind of a sore spot in our community for quite a while. I personally, and most, most of our, our steering committee that was there Friday, also were very excited about what was going on, or what is going on, and we're looking forward to the future, looking forward to having a new park, as well as mixed-use development, both of affordable housing and market-rate housing, and new opportunities for businesses. This is a win for Eugene. This is a win for downtown. I urge you all to, to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Lawson, followed by Tom Stewart.
Good evening, Council. My name's Philip Lawson. I'm not sure what ward I'm in, but my zip code is 97405. I'm here to, on the map, it showed a red circle around the steam plant. And that's, red circle's probably around our teenagers. You say the word teenager, you say, oh, no one really has a handle on that. So, I'm thinking that that steam plant might make a good teen center. My dad was a contractor. I'm just a retired educator, but I do know that that could be done with some marvelous architectural designs. I have some in mind myself, where you could actually construct inside that enclosure a series of mezzanines. Each mezzanine would be for some worthy kind of teen. One mezzanine would be, say, for, oh, I like the word video games because you can't come in the center with a cellphone. You have to check it at the door. There's no Wi-Fi in the building. If you want to use your phone, you have to go out front and check it out for 10 minutes. If you need it any longer than 10 minutes, then it's time to go home. Anyway, this enclosure is the kind that would work for that age group because it's huge, and you could have auto body shops on the ground floor, you could have practice rooms and garage bands. One mezzanine could be for, you know, board games, you know, or darts in your chess and backgammon. Another one would be for crafts, you know, you know, doll making? Come on, it's, it's okay. You don't have anything else to do in the summer, do you? Except go sit in the McDonald parking lot or ride around Sonic 100 times? What do, what did you do as a teenager? What did I do? You know, I know where it goes, forget some smoke or whatever, let's go to teen center. I think that could be worked out. I know it could. I'm going to be writing to editor of the Eugene newspaper, and I'll be talking to the school board. I think school board, school district, churches, banks, everyone needs to get behind this. There's, when you think of teenager now, you, you just kind of bristle. And Eugene has a, kind of a model, but the skate park, where they took something that had a bit of a negative connotation and elevated it to a combined effort with community and people, and now it's, it's pretty much world-renowned. Tactics is one of the best skateboard operations and businesses in the world, and that's right down on, in Fourth Street next to the skate park. So, teen center architects, if you want to call me up, I'll have some drawings myself. And good luck, Eugene, with handling those rowdy folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Stewart, followed by Chris Edwards.
Members of City Council and Mayor Venice, thank you for your time. My name is Tom Stewart. I live in Ward Five. I grew up in Eugene, and I now work here as a young professional. I support the current plan for the riverfront redevelopment as proposed by Williams and Dame, and I ask you all to do the same. The riverfront redevelopment will enhance the viability of its surrounding area, nearby retail and restaurants, both those already established and those yet to be established will benefit greatly from the increased foot traffic of people who will live in the developments, many proposed housing structures, and of visitors who simply want to enjoy the beauty of the development's new park. In addition, the riverfront redevelopment will be a game changer in our effort to build a city that is competitive in attracting and retaining young professionals. Building a strong, young professional community in Eugene is key to taking our local economy to new heights. New heights means more jobs throughout the city and more money in everyone's pockets, including the city government. Transformational redevelopment projects such as this are rare. We must not let this tremendous opportunity pass us by. Williams and Dame is uniquely qualified to turn the riverfront into something wonderful that everyone in Eugene can be proud of. Please support the current plans for the riverfront redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Edwards, followed by Jim New.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Chris Edwards. I live in Ward Seven, soon to be in Counselor Saret's district, soon to be in Counselor Clark's district. I don't know the number of that ward, though, so. I am here testifying on behalf of myself, not of my employer, and I'm here in strong support of the riverfront redevelopment project. There is a lot happening in Eugene, and it's exciting. It's really exciting. Downtown fiber, downtown itself, I mean, downtown wants to be great. It's not quite there yet, but it has a lot of potential, and I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna get there. The Riverfront Project, Fifth Street, the Night Campus for Accelerating Scientific And with this much change, I think it's natural in a community like Eugene for there to emerge some civic apprehension. And I get it. I mean, some of that apprehension, I think, is sometimes rooted in our community in a sense of nostalgia and perhaps in a sense, or a fear of loss, a loss of things that we value and cherish here. And I get it. I mean, I grew up in South Eugene. My parents still live there. I graduated from South. I love this city, and this city is all about memories for me. But my nostalgia for the past is really, just, it's about the past. And in the meantime, the world has been evolving and changing, and this community is naturally evolving and changing, whether we want it to or not. And so, I think that this project is a great opportunity to add some intention to that change to help drive the development of an innovation economy. Each of those projects that I mentioned earlier are important elements of what an innovation economy might look like. And it also gives us the opportunity to take some pressure off of UGB expansion and to create some density downtown, to help lower our carbon footprint by creating work-life situations that afford greater opportunity for good old-fashioned walking and biking and mass transit, and just that increased sense of community. So, I'm really excited about this project, and I hope, and I respectfully request that you consider folks' opinions like myself, and I hope that you conclude, just as I have, that this project is an important part in building that innovation economy for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim New, followed by Sue Pritchard.
Mayor and Council, my name is Jim New. I live in Ward Seven. I speak on behalf of 350 Eugene. There's a volunteer with them. There seems to be a sense of urgency within the city to prepare for the 2021 World Track and Field Championships. Last week, demolition of the Hayward Field grandstands and the public introduction to the downtown riverfront redevelopment project are initiating changes to this town that will be experienced for generations to come. The downtown redevelopment project is a golden opportunity to model a green, functional, mixed-use development that would align with the goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance by incorporating greenhouse gas reduction strategies. This project should operate without fossil fuel use by prohibiting gas energy and incorporating a clean energy district. The gas line running up 30th Avenue should be the last fossil fuel infrastructure project the city undertakes. A minimum amount of onsite renewable energy should be generated, and geothermal heating and cooling should be part, should be put into effect. Requirements for electric vehicle infrastructure and water-saving devices should be stipulated, and HVAC systems should be designed to filter heavy smoke from seasonal wildfires. First-floor elevation should increase beyond code requirements for 100-year flood zone, and seismic building standards should be required throughout the project. Carbon-intensive concrete should not be used, and cross-laminated timber structural designs could be a widely-used alternative. The housing units should provide underground parking for vehicles and bicycles, and utility fees should be included in rental fees. The children adventure playground area, the urban agriculture, and Pollinator Knoll should be reincorporated into the plan, as well as increase the green space from 3.3 acres and back into original 5.5 acres. Lastly, as money-saving, carbon-reducing solution, the city hall should be moved into the E-Web building. Some of you were at the Paul Hawken drawdown talk, and reuse, reduce, repurpose, and recycle as a solution. Please make this project part of the solution. Thank you. I know Mike liked that idea, didn't you, Mike?
Thank you, brother.
Thank you. Sue Pritchard, followed by Tom Brandt.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I live in Allen's Linkus Ward, and my name is Sue Pritchard. I'm here to express my enthusiastic support of this project as proposed by Williams and Dame. I've been fortunate to be in some of the information sessions with the developers and have met personally with them, and I understand the analysis and their opportunity and their plans to implement. I have three points I want to emphasize. The first point is that we are so fortunate to have this particular team at the table. I'm familiar with several of their other projects in other cities, and they have both the experience and the skills to bring this project to life. They've done their homework. They understand both the challenges and the opportunities that our small city offers. This is not a cookie-cutter project. They're tailoring their plans to Eugene's specific demographics and economic conditions. We are so fortunate to have them involved. My second point is about MPT. They need it, and this is the right project for the MPT program. This is not capstone, and while I know that that left a bad taste for a lot of people, to apply unnecessary and limiting constraints on this project, a project that we greatly need, would delay the development of the waterfront and would delay the construction of a much-needed housing. My third point is a word of caution. I've heard some say that we need lots of little shops and restaurants, and some are wondering, what happened to Restaurant Row? As most of you know, I am retired from a 30-year career in commercial real estate, and I can tell you that we do not need more retail in that location. We have a downtown that already struggles with retail. We have unfilled spaces just a few blocks away. We have a very vibrant Fifth Street market close by. We should minimize retail, in my opinion, and focus heavily on housing. To require more retail puts the property and the project and the city at risk. These folks are experts in their field, and they know the limits to which they can include retail and still have the project work. So, I hope you would not be misled by people who are not development experts on that particular topic. Valuable housing comes first, and then, if there's demand, retail can follow later. I'm going to steal a quote from somebody who's sitting back there, because it was such a good one I heard at a meeting the other day, that this is a fantastic private investment with huge public benefit, and I think that really caps that topic up. I encourage you to support their plan, to support the code amendments that are needed to approve of their plan, and to support the MPT approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Brandt. Tom Brandt, followed by Kelly Fitzpatrick.
My name is Tom Brandt. I lived in the county for quite a while. The first thing, when I got here, I was thirsty. There's no water here. No water in a public meeting. Got a fountain back there, but it doesn't work. Got drinking fountains downstairs, upstairs. We can't get to them. They're all locked up. Okay, that's just a little thing. We all need water, but that thing should be fixed over there. I went to all the meetings. Well, a little history. I was, I helped get the Saturday Market going. I was voted the first executive director of the Saturday Market Corporation, co-founder of the Lane County Office of Appropriate Technology, which got recycling going. And Lane County used to be known for recycling. Other places are now. We got composting going, these big piles of compost. I went to those people in '77. I says, "Look, you should take this yard waste, grind it up, compost it, and you can sell it." And they went, "Get out of here. That's not worth anything." So we had to do our own project to prove that they could and that that's what is happening now. Little history, old historic buildings in downtown Eugene, gone. Buried out West 11th. I didn't like that at the time. Lincoln School. 4J sold Lincoln School. The money they got was gone in no time. Well, the developer made condos and livable structure out of it and now they have thousands of dollars a month coming in. I was talking about the school doing that. Even educate the kids on how to re-renovate a place like that, electrical, carpentry, all of that. But no, it's money going to developers and not for the taxpayer. Civic Stadium, boy, there's one. What a deal. What a deal. Nobody wanted to do anything except developers take it over. And they screwed around until, you know, you don't want the old historic building? Let's just let it burn down. And that's what happened. And then City Hall, you know, we've got City Hall over there right now. A vacant lot, just like a lot of the other places that happened here. You know, promises about the cost of building. And then once you had to hurry up and tear it down, then you have nothing.
Thank you. Kelly Fitzpatrick, followed by John Borowski.
Kelly Fitzpatrick, Ward Three. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the Riverfront. One of the wonderful things about the Northwest and a green opportunity for Eugene are the community gardens. I'd like to advocate for the possibility of squeezing a little bit more green space out of those 16 acres of private development for a community garden for the tenants that live there. The other point that I would like to advocate for is I don't think that the one affordable housing unit that is indicated is enough for the population and I would like to request more intermixed affordable housing within the designated housing units. The other thing I'd like to advocate for is some creative design and construction of the buildings that are being planned. I think that Eugene has had a virus of some unimaginative and not very creative buildings and I'd like to advocate for a little bit of, I don't know, the essence of the river in these buildings. So thank you.
Thank you. John Borowski, followed by Brittany Quick Warner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. John Borowski, Ward Three. Tonight I'd like to talk to you about tools. The City Council doesn't have a lot of tools when it comes to development and in this project, you've got two tools that, to a lot of people, are dirty words: tax increment financing and MPT. I think both of these tools are specifically forged for this project. The Riverfront Research or the Riverfront Urban Renewal Agency has sat dormant for years. I got on Budget Committee back in 2006. I think the only thing that we've ever really done in the, in the Riverfront Urban Renewal Agency is pass it and pay the administrative fees. And we've been waiting for that tool to be used for years. And now is the time for you folks to use that tool to help shepherd this project along. Second tool is MPT. Again, a lot of people in this community look at MPT and think of that as a giveaway. You're giving away the tax dollars to the evil developers. That's not what MPT is. MPT is a tool to help shepherd in projects that this city needs and wants. It's, that property there is not producing any taxes right now. They're not producing any property taxes. A 10-month, a 10-year waiver of a property tax on that isn't going to cost the city money. But not building on that project will cost the city money. 10 years from now, that MPT and the increase in property values will go right to the bottom line. So I encourage you folks to use these tools going forward. The MPT has been designed to be more accommodating towards what the city's needs are. And finally, as far as housing goes and housing affordability, just because a house is built or housing is built that's expensive, that doesn't mean that that's not helping our housing stock. The person that moves into that house down by the river is moving out of a house that maybe somebody that can, they're upgrading and the house that they're moving out of, somebody can, that has lower income might be able to move into that one. And the person that's moving out of that one to go upgrade, anytime you increase the housing stock, even if it's high-dollar housing stock, it helps our housing throughout.
Thank you. Brittany Quick Warner, followed by Kimberly Gladen.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I appreciate you always being here tonight and listening to all of us. I know a handful of these things we've heard a couple times, but I think it's important for us to reiterate them. Eugene's got a lot going on and while the growth sometimes comes with difficult decisions, I'm incredibly optimistic that we're moving in the right direction and I know I'm not alone. Two weeks ago, the Eugene Chamber hosted the Third Annual Young Professional Summit where nearly 550 young professionals gathered together for professional development and to learn about community initiatives. The Riverfront Redevelopment Project was one of many exciting projects that we talked about and the feedback from the event illustrated the enthusiasm that many of these young professionals have for this project and many of the projects that our community is embarking on. They are certainly not the only demographic who expressed enthusiasm and excitement. People are excited and they're hopeful for this project. The Riverfront Redevelopment Proposal represents an opportunity for us to realize and execute on many of these long-held values and priorities that we've expressed for our community. First, this mixed-use redevelopment helps us densify our core, creating a range of housing options inclusive of affordable housing units. This will not only help make a dent in our housing need, but will also help us support our downtown revitalization efforts as we bring in new residents to the core to support that downtown economy. The developers have thoughtfully crafted, created a plan for a walkable neighborhood that enables residents to depend less on vehicles and to have greater access to alternative modes of transportation. Williams, Dame and Associates have impressive, have an impressive reputation for community-oriented, high-quality development and they've pushed the envelope in other cities to develop sustainably. We are expanding our parklands and creating a vibrant connection to the river that will allow all residents of our region to experience and enjoy this incredible asset that we have in our community. Many years ago, when the community shared their vision for this development, they identified these core principles that Mike talked about and ideals to keep in mind and city staff and Williams and Dame have kept these in the forefront of their mind throughout this entire process. I believe that they've brought these ideas to the table to make this community vision a reality and I think they've also taken it to the next level, really bringing life to the desires that we have to connect to the river. From the consideration of where to place the roads, to having, to be able to avoid having vehicles too close to the river, to the great new idea to extend the Fifth Street to create a cohesive path from the Whittaker down to the river, into the grouping of the public spaces to create a larger, more user-friendly park space, they have responsibly and creatively melded the current market reality, which I think we have to take into consideration with this development, and our vision for this incredible space. For our community to realize the greatness of this opportunity, we'll need to make some important investments that we will see abundant returns on for our community. We fully support these investments and we're excited to see this project come to fruition. I appreciate your time and I urge you to support this project.
Thank you. Kimberly Gladen, followed by Louis English.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen. I live downtown. Last Wednesday, I walked by that area. I've been doing Walk It Off Wednesdays in Alton Baker Park and I thought I'd check out the South River Walk and go across Austin Footbridge and cruise down there back to the E-Web building as part of my walk. I have to say, the area right now is scary and creepy. I don't think I'll do that again unless, of course, I get that 357 Magnum to keep him on my hip because, so I'm excited that the area would be redeveloped and maybe get some other foot traffic down there, give travelers another place to hang other than Broadway. I'm glad they're going to have some affordable housing, but I don't think it's enough of affordable housing. Market-rate housing is not affordable for people who are going to work in the shops and restaurants. Having worked in a shop downtown, my affordable housing where I lived for 17 years on Broadway, when the owner passed away, his kids sold it off and the new owners looked at what market-rate housing was and priced us all out of the building. Right now, I'm living in HUD Housing on 8th and, you know, it's adequate, but it certainly isn't the place I lived in for 17 years. I feel that there needs to be housing down there that the people who work in that area can afford. That's a real key to abandoning your automobile or to not having to travel so much is that you can walk to work. Right now, I rely on the EMX to take me to my new job because the place I work downtown left the downtown. And it's about a 40-minute to an hour travel to where I work now in Springfield and luckily I can take a bus there. It was hard to get a job because many of the jobs where I could have worked, the bus doesn't go there or the bus doesn't leave early enough or the bus doesn't go late enough for me to get a shift. So I was very fortunate to get what I get, but I am all for being able to walk to work. It made a big difference to me when I could walk to work. And I feel that, you know, if you're going to give a MPT to somebody, it should be someone who's making affordable housing, not just for low-income people, but for the people who are going to work in the area. We don't need more high-dollar housing in this town. We got a lot of it, you know, a lot of expensive student apartments where it's over $1,000 a room. We have a lot of buildings for the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis English. Is he still here? No. Okay, followed, Bob Hart. And Bob will be followed by David Sonnixon.
Bob Hart, wearing my hat for the Lane County History Museum and Historical Society, Mayor Venice, council members, City Manager John Reese. I wanted to congratulate you in advance for the vision that I am sure you were going to have in supporting what is really a no-brainer. No one has said that tonight. But this plan is a no-brainer. And you were at a historic time in Eugene's history, Lane County's history, in terms of development. There, as other speakers have said, there is lots going on. You've got Fifth Street. You've got the Civic Alliance. You've, you know, there is so much going on here at this point. This is part of it and this needs to be supported. I wanted to make, other than rah-rah, go, and being a cheerleader for the moment, I wanted to make a pitch for the History Museum being included in future discussions in terms of possible location of a satellite facility, perhaps in the affordable housing development, which of course hasn't really been flushed out at this point. But I know in some of the discussion that went on on Wednesday, there was some talk about possibly 3,000 to 4,000 square feet being allocated for what we would consider a satellite facility. I also should mention the potential for a cultural nexus downtown adjacent to the Halt Center as possibly an extension of the Fifth Street Market project and possible future location of the main location for the Lane History Museum in that cultural nexus. But thank you for your vision and the support. I'm sure you're going to give to this project. Thanks.
Thank you. David Sonnixon, followed by James Atkins.
David Sonnixon, Ward Three, and I am here to speak with great support for the park concept for the Riverfront redevelopment. This would be a big challenge for the city of Eugene, Parks and Open Space staff, because really this park would be an inset into a real barren landscape with almost no native support for it. So it has to simultaneously attract people. It has to feature native plants. And it also has to keep people away from the river itself, contact with the river because the current is so strong there. You can't have people wanting to put their feet in it. But I think if anybody can do this, my experience with Eugene Parks and Open Space tells me that they can, that they're willing to take on this challenge. And I hope they do. But I also want to oppose the idea of a bridge. 20 feet last Wednesday from where I was told by a Parks and Open Space staffer that the proposed bridge was just a sweet, sweetening of the entire project. A developer was promoting it to the point of showing hard copies of the bridge and we've seen many iterations of it tonight projected onto the screen. The developer said to someone that I was hearing him discuss it with that seed money would be provided by the developer to have plans for the bridge permits and the like, which you need before you build something like that. And I think that if you ask people if they want dessert, most people say, "Yeah." This is one-quarter mile from the Defazio Bridge. And the developer then said, "Well, it's so far from the next bridge." That would be the Fronmeyer Bridge. "Anybody serious about exercising, it's not far." And I go through there all the time and I'm not afraid of it, even though I've helped clean up illegal camps in Alton Baker Park too and it's really a gut-wrenching exercise. I would ask you therefore to tell the developer to stop promoting a boutique bridge. Transportation planning takes, takes a lot of planning and the next bridge should go between Springfield and Glenwood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final speaker, James Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. My name is James Atkins. I'm a partner with Williams and Dame. On behalf of my partner- On behalf of my partners, Dyke Dane and Homer Williams, I would want to thank you for the chance to work with your staff this past year. It's been a year and a week since we signed our exclusive negotiating agreement. Back January 31st, we were here to speak with you. We presented a concept plan. After that point, we worked diligently with staff over the last few months to develop a term sheet that I think is both fair and reasonable. In the last month particularly, together with city staff, we hosted a table at the Downtown Art Walk, two meetings at the River Guides, a meeting with the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and an open house that we hosted with city staff last Wednesday. The result of that was we received unanimous approval from the River Guides, recommending to you to advance the concept plan and our terms. I know the Downtown Neighborhood Association wrote a very favorable letter, and we would just ask that you please consider our concept plan. We're very excited to get started. We look forward to the chance to connect downtown to the river. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for speaking. It is always helpful and interesting and, and sometimes inspiring. So I don't know if council have comments they wish to make? If not, I think that closes our public hearing and closes our meeting. Thank you all very much.